And we're gonna call this meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Mrs. Ball, if you could do the roll call for us, please.
President.
Councilmember Kearney.
President.
Councilmember Love. Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Council Vice President McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Raynor.
Here.
Mayor Porter.
Here.
Councilmember Higgs.
Here. And Councilwoman Love is on her way. She's gonna be a few minutes late.
Okay.
If we can stand for prayer and the pledge at the same time.
Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting tonight. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights and are welcome. And we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for the city of See Pleasant. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. As James says, if any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given to him. We claim this promise as we start our meeting tonight and trust in your provision. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. Allegiance to the flag.
Thank you all. I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda for this evening minus the presentation for the, what is this, Prince George's County Arts and Humanities Council. They have having technical difficulties.
So move.
Thank you. Any questions? Not hearing any.
Four.
Councilmember Kearney. Thank you. Measure passes unanimously by the City Council.
Thank you, Council. We're gonna go right on to the approval of the regular work session meeting minutes for Monday, April the 7th, 2025.
Council President, while you all are perusing it, can you give me like two minutes? I need to remove a document and upload a new document. There were some changes made to the budget, and I don't wanna, I wanna make certain that I put the right document there.
Okay, sure.
Box, and then you will see the updated agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, budget.
Okay. You good now? Okay. Thank you all for allowing us that time. We're gonna go ahead and ask for the approval of the regular work session meeting minutes for April the 7th. Thank you. Can we get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Not hearing any.
Four.
Measure passes five to one.
Thank you. Approval of the public session meeting minutes for April 14th, 2025.
The move.
Thank you, Councilmember Raynor. Second.
Second.
Any questions? Not hearing any.
Online voting is open. Measure passes five to one.
Thank you, Council. The approval of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget hearing meeting minutes for Monday, April 14th, 2025.
The move.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Not hearing any.
Online voting is open.
Thank you.
There is a grammatical error.
Okay.
Under 1.1.1.2 roll call. Where it says invocation, Councilmember Jones' name is spelled incorrectly.
Okay, I can make that correction.
Measure pass says five to one with amendments.
Thank you. Approval of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget hearing meeting minutes for Saturday, April the 19th, 2025.
The move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, McCarthy?
Same correction. One next one as well. Okay. Online voting is open. Measure passes five to one with amendments.
Thank you. And we're gonna move on to the approval of the special session meeting minutes for Monday, April 28th, 2025.
The move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? Not hearing any.
Councilmember Jones.
Oh, got it.
Measure passes five to one.
Thank you, Council. We're gonna move right into the citizen comments. We just got a message from the other presenter. They won't be available tonight as well. So that will have to be rescheduled.
Okay.
Okay. Any citizen comments?
So I did not receive any in writing. We do have a few citizens online, and we just have one person walked in. What we have to do here today. In person first, okay.
Does any of our residents here, good evening, thank you all for attending tonight. Does anyone have anything they would like to state to the council thus far?
Can you hear me? Do I have to put it back? Good evening. I am Citizen Charlene Smith. And hopefully this compliment is not too late. I just want to praise you all and compliment you all as far as See Pleasant Day was concerned. It's been a long time since I attended a See Pleasant Day. Probably was younger, so, because I grew up here and then I moved away. But See Pleasant Day, I just wanna compliment you all on See Pleasant Day. And then also, I'd like to thank Councilmember Raynor for, I called it a pre-birthday gift because I went to the concert on Friday, and my birthday was on Saturday, and we got back here at midnight. So I left, I was one age, and I returned, I was another. So, so just wanna, you know, keep up the good work. And just thank you. Proud to be part of See Pleasant. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Thank you.
Ms. Trainor, we have allowed you in to speak. Please unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Ms. Robinson. Good afternoon, no, it's evening. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I wanted to say two things. I wanted to give a special thank you for the invite to Ms. Hope Love, which she invited me when I attended her ward community forum with the See Pleasant Police Department. And then I wanna give a shout out and a great big thank you for the Mother's Day gospel event that I was invited to by Councilmember Raynor and at-large McCarthy. I appreciate that very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I gotta figure out how to do this.
Is there anyone else online?
Please raise your hand.
Okay, no other hands. All right. Thank you. We're gonna move on from the presentations and go right into the legislation for tonight. This one is 4.1, the ordinance O-25-11, amendment to the Chapter 112 noise, first reading.
Ordinance O-25-11 introduced by City Council on May 12th, 2025, first reading tonight, Monday, May 12th, 2025. An ordinance concerning Chapter 112 noise. For the purpose of amending Chapter 112 noise of the Code of the City of See Pleasant by renaming certain sections and categories, adding a new section and increases, increasing the violations and penalties and prohibiting certain noises above a specified decibels 24 hours per day. By amending Chapter 112, Sections 112 through 1, 112.1 through 112.5, by adding a new section, 112.6, and renaming certain sections and categories, Code of the City of See Pleasant, 1994, addition as amended. Whereas pursuant to Maryland Code, annotated local government, Code 5-2021 and C-501A of the Charter of the See Pleasant, the Council of the City of See Pleasant has the power to pass all ordinance not contrary to the Constitution and laws of Maryland or the Charter as it may deem necessary for good government of the city. And whereas the City Council desires to amend Chapter 112 noise of the Code of the City of See Pleasant for the purpose of renaming certain sections and categories, adding a new section and amending the violations and penalties and prohibiting certain noises, noises above specified decibels 24 hours per day. And whereas the City Council deems it in the interest of the public health, welfare, and safety of citizens of See Pleasant and for good government of the City of See Pleasant to act this ordinance and to take this, to take the action as described herein. Section 1, be it ordained by the See Pleasant City Council, that Sections 112.1 through 112.5 are amended with renumbering and renaming of sections and by adding new Sections 112, 112-6 through 112-8 of the Code of the City of See Pleasant, 1994, addition as amended to read as follow. 112.1, renaming it from findings to declaration of policy. That section will now read, "The mayor and council of the City of See Pleasant hereby declare it to be a public policy of the city that every person is entitled to an environment free of noise levels which are detrimental to the life, health, and enjoyment of the property." The purpose of this chapter of the, of See Pleasant, excuse me, the purpose of this chapter of See Pleasant Code is to establish the lawful and unlawful limits of noise within the city and the enforcement procedures and requirements pertaining thereto. So where you see the strike through, that was what was in the code before. So that's why all of that is stricken out because that's no longer in that section. Section 112.2 is now definitions. A is noise means any sound occurring on either a continuous, intermittent, or impulsive basis. It is also, it also means intensity, frequency, duration, character of sound, including sound of, sound and vibration of sub audible frequencies. B is continuous noise means whose level does not vary to the human ears for at least five minutes. Intermittent noise means any noise with the sound level that varies to the human hearing, but it is audible for more than a period of 10 minutes, 10 seconds, excuse me. Impulsive noise means a short burst of sound not exceeding 10 seconds. Daytime, unless otherwise specifically noted, means the hours from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Nighttime means, nighttime, unless otherwise specifically noted, means the hours from 9:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Decimal means a unit of measure equal to 10 times the, okay. Cedric, help me on this one. Logarithm, I think that's. Logarithm, okay. To the base 10 of the ratio of the particular sound, pressure, pressure squared to the standard reference, pressure squared as the standard reference pressure, pressure is 20 micropascals. DBA means decibels of sound as determined by a weighing network of a sound level meter or by calculations from octave band or one-third octave band data. Commercial means anything other than a residential zone or industrial zone. Construction means temporary activities directly associated with site preparations, assembly, erection, repair, alterations, or demolition of structure or road, of, or roadways. Residential means any property in a residential zone. And source means any person, installation, device, or animal caused or contributing to the noise. 112.2 was changed to 112.3, which is noise prohibited, and the language reads as follows. It should be unlawful for any person, whether that person be a homeowner, owner, tenant, firm, or corporation to cause violation of this chapter or to, or to allow on property that person owns or occupies or on property which that person has a right or license to occupy, any noise or sound level in violation of this chapter or on any violation of this chapter. It shall be unlawful for any person to make continued or to be made a continue and excessive, unnecessary, or un, should be unusually loud noise or any noise which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers the comfort, repose, health, peace, or safety of others within the limit of the city. 112.3 is now 112.4, enumeration of prohibited acts. A through C, there's no changes in the current code. We amended Section D by striking out the previous language. And it now reads yelling, shouting, et cetera, yelling, yelling, hooting, whistling, or singing on public streets or within the distance of 50 feet from the building, structure, or vehicle in which it is located. Shall be prohibited at any time or place so as to annoy or disturb the quiet comfort or repose of a person in any office or any dwelling hotel or other type of residence or on any persons in the vicinity. E through N, there were no changes to that particular section. 112.5, it now has been changed from additional remedies injunction to noise level and noise disturbing standards for construction. Maximum allowable noise levels except as otherwise provided this section. A person, in this section, a person must not. This section, um, a person, in this section, a person must not cause or permit noise levels that exceed the following levels. The maximum allowable noise levels, um, DBA, day and night for industrial is during the day seventy-five, at night seventy-five, commercial is sixty-seven, at night sixty-two, residential sixty-five, and at night fifty-five. If the noise emanates from the source located within a non-residential zone, the maximum permissible sound is daytime, any continuous noise audible from a distance of fifty feet or less from either the source of the noise or the property that is the source of the noise. Any intermittent noise audible from a distance of the, of one hundred feet or less from either the source of the noise or the property that is the source of the noise. Any impulsive noise repeated at least once within that five-minute period that is audible from a distance of one hundred, one hundred and fifty feet or less from either the source of the noise or the property that is the source of the noise. Night, nighttime, any noise audible from a distance of fifty feet or less from either the source of the noise or the property that is the source of the noise. If the noise emanates from the source, source located within residential use zone or if the noise can be heard within a residential use zone regardless of its place or origin, the maximum permissible sound level is, um, daytime, any continuous noise audible from the distance of fifty feet or less from either the source of the noise or the property that is the source of the noise. The intermittent noise audible from either the source of the noise or the distance of fifty feet or less from the property that is the source of the noise. Any impulsive noise audible from either the source of the noise or a distance of fifty feet or less than the property that is the source of the noise. The nighttime, any noise audible from a distance of thirty, thirty feet or less from either the source of the noise or the property that is the source of the noise. One twelve six, um, which is a new section, measurement of sound. The equipment and tech, techniques employed in the measurement of the noise levels under this chapter may be, may be those recommended by the Maryland State Department of Environment, which may not, excuse me, which may but need not refer to currently accepted standards or recognized organizations, including but not limited to the American National Standards Institute, American Society for Testing and Materials, Society of Automotive Engineers, and the United States Environmental Protection Agency. A violation of this chapter may be established by the use of a commercially available noise meter that complies with one or more of the standard listed in subsection A. The measurement of the noise level shall be conducted at, at points on or within the property line of the receiving property or the boundary of a zoning district and may be con, may be conducted at any point for the determination of identity of the multiple source of situation. The, the, the detection of sound by an enforcement officer at the distance of fifty feet is sufficient to constitute a plainly audible sound. No provisions of this chapter shall be interpreted to limit enforcement based on lack of evidence or the sound level meter reading. Evidence based on the audible impression formed by an enforcement officer is equally sufficient to the sound of the, to that sound level meter reading. One twelve seven, which is waivers, which is a new section. Upon written request, the city manager or their designee may waive any part of the chap, of this chapter for a temporary event and the noise, and the noise of the event will create or cause in excess of the limits established. Under the chap, under this chapter is offset by the benefits of the event to the general public. Any waiver granted under this section shall be for a limited and finite duration. The city manager shall provide public notice of a request for a waiver under this section by posting such notice on the city's website, publication in the city's newsletter, and posting a sign at the location of the source. The city manager may not approve a request for a public waiver under this section at least ten days after the initial posting or publication of a public notice. The city manager may grant a waiver if the manager determines that the compliance in a particular case is not practicable and would impose an undue hardship. Before granting a waiver, the city manager shall consider the use of the property from which the noise source will emanate, the, the uses, the uses of adjoining and surrounding properties and likely impact of a waiver on those properties, the type and anticipated levels of the noise for which the waiver is requested, and the duration and frequency of the event for which the waiver is requested. If the city manager grants a waiver, the manager may impose reasonable conditions to mitigate any adverse impact on the adjoining and surrounding properties that may be caused by the waiver. The city manager, after notice, an opportunity to be heard, may suspend, modify, or revoke a waiver granted under this section if a person violates the terms or condition of this, of the waiver. One twelve eight, enforcement violations and penalties. What was amended in this section is, um, section A, unless otherwise herein provided before issuing an initial citation, subjecting the violation, subjecting the violator a fine or other penalties, the alleged violator or the owner of the source of the noise in question shall be advised verbally or in writing by an officer of the city of the nature of the alleged violation and shall be warned in order to cease the violation and not repeat if or else be subject to a fine or other penalties. If such alleged violator, owner fails to cease the violation or shall repeat the violation, then a citation subjecting the violating violator or owner to a fine or other penalty shall be issued. No warning needs to be issued if the source of the noise is a vehicle or if the warning has been issued within the last ninety days of the alleged violator, um, or property owner. One twelve five now becomes one twelve nine, which is still named the same, additional remedies and injunction. Um, where's my light? I think it was no changes to that one. Just double checking. Bear with me for just a second. I think there are no changes, but I'm trying to double check because I had two different ones for this. Okay, there are no changes to that section. It's just the renumbering of it. I just wanted to be certain. So let me continue to read where we are. Okay, section two, and be it further ordained by the Council of the City of C Pleasant that the recitals to this ordinance are incorporated herein deemed a substantial part of this ordinance. And section three, be it further ordained by the Council of the City of C Pleasant that other ordinances or parts of ordinance or provisions of the Code of the City of C Pleasant nineteen ninety-four addition as amended, in conflict with this, in conflict with this provision or this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such inconsistency. Section four, and be it further ordained by the Council of the City of C Pleasant that the title of this ordinance or condensed version thereof should be deemed to be and is a fair summary of this ordinance for publication of the purposes. Section five, be it further ordained by the Council of the City of C Pleasant that if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court or competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate and distinct and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity or of the remaining portions of this ordinance. And it being the intent of the City Council that this ordinance shall stand, notwithstanding the invalidity of any section, subsection, um, sentence, call, clause, or phrase, or portion thereof. Section six, and be it ordained by the Council of the City of C Pleasant that the city clerks are certified to the passage of this ordinance and cause the same or to the extent permitted by the Charter, a fair summary of the same to be published as required by law, and that this ordinance should become effective at the expiration of twenty days following the approval by the mayor or passage by the council over the mayor's veto.
This is the first reading. Yes. If you have a question that you want, though. Okay. Does anyone want to ask a question tonight so that you can? We have time. Does any, any other council members have any questions, comments, concerns? That was a lot, a lot, so.
Okay. Are we gonna provide the whole ward four waivers?
The what? Oh, that's a question for.
Because all of our houses are connected by one wall. So we don't, are we, I said, are we gonna provide the whole ward four waivers? Cause our houses are connected by a wall. Or we just not gonna enforce it?
What she's indicating, what she's indicating is that the fifty-foot rule, okay? In this particular case here for noise ordinance, which means that typically your, your neighbor is gonna say something. If your noise level is up high, okay, the, most of the, the houses are, are semi-detached, uh, a good portion of them in Ward four. So that would create, it could create an undue stress depending upon when you talk about those decibels. Most people, my, they understand, okay? Obviously, they don't. Many do, uh, when they have their volumes of certain things or they're having their events cranked up a little bit more than necessary. Uh, so that's, uh, revved up, I don't know, lack of a better word. Is that what you were doing to council members?
Well, yeah, cause my neighbors could talk and I could, I could hear them through the wall. So say if, you know, I wanted to be petty, I could say they're too loud. Like there's not fifty feet within, which has been the issue. So with the current, it's always been an issue basically in our ward, right? But with this, and I don't know if there was a particular section that you didn't read. Um, I don't know, so it's a misdemeanor, right? But if I'm just talking or if I have my TV on, they could complain twice in a ninety-day period. Right. And what I'm saying, it's always been an issue, but what I'm, it's, it's always been an issue. So I'm not, this is not the first time I brought this up. So it has always been an issue. What I'm saying is because it's a misdemeanor, like how are we gonna approach that? Being people-centered? Like what, what, what are we gonna do for those people who are in those situations? Like if somebody in the apartment decided they wanted to use this ordinance to, to, you know, kind of harass somebody, how does that work?
Some old levels, somebody just speaking, yelling in and of itself wouldn't necessarily reach to the levels of a decimal level that would be considered a violation. Um, the, the fifty feet and the hundred feet rule, those all go to, in fact, to determine the, the, the audible readings from the decimal reader from a distance. If somebody is in their apartment or in their house that's attached and they are yelling, I don't, I don't know anybody personally that can reach those decimals by just speaking or yelling.
So there's also a portion that talks about, um,
I'm sorry. There's also a port, so I guess what I'm trying to get at, like the way the houses are made, right? I just want to make sure that the, the ordinance is used the way it's intended to use and not used to harass neighbors. And so it's always been a problem with me, right? And I get it, we do have to have some type of noise ordinance. Like I get that, which is why they've been, been able to pass and, you know, get through in the past. But I'm just worried that somebody's gonna take this and run with it. Cause like my neighbor could be sitting on their front porch cause it, there's mention about making noise a certain amount of feet from a, a building, right? My window is right there. They could be on their property, just talking. Like how do, how do we, how do we make sure that like people are not using this against each other?
That's why I held up this nor, this ordinance. It due to the fact that I got with, uh, Chief Haywood in reference to the importance of actually testing it out in the neighborhoods. This is the reason why, for we can actually understand and hear what is, that was my purpose for this question right here. That's why I was like, let's hold up and actually test it. We tested in actually.
Last week.
The neighborhood. Yeah, last week.
And, and.
The difference from testing it out in the park or at the police department, we have to test it actually in a residential neighborhood. And that's what we did. That's what we held up this, to actually do that.
And, and what I would say in reference to the enforcement side of it, um, the police department has never been heavy-handed on enforcement. We enforce what needs to be enforced, but we understand how some may, it's with any law, right? Some may, some want to use it to what their advantage is at the moment. That's why we go out. If we deem it to be a violation, we make notifications. If we deem it not to be a violation, that's where we try to use the mediation processes to try and alleviate some of these things. While, and I know not every neighbor dispute is going to be resolved without just sitting there and talking to these folks. But, uh, over enforcement is not something that has ever been an issue when it comes to noise since I've been here. And it's not something that I expect or would allow to become an issue, um, with us doing it. The purpose of redoing this noise ordinance was to make it clear for everybody, not just those of us that are enforcing it, but the residents and the neighbors to have a clear understanding of what is allowed and what isn't allowed. My personal opinion was that the previous ordinance left too much room for interpretation and it was, it was, people didn't understand it. Um, so our ability to make it clear, I think, will be of assistance. And again, since I've been here, I haven't heard of any of my neighbors talking too loud type of ordeals. Only noise complaints we get on the police department side are people in their backyards with their speakers up too loud, cars out on the street, speakers up too loud. Um, the, the one house who has his party every year, music too loud. Those are the type of music, I mean, noise complaints that we're getting. And those are the typically the things that we address. On the flip side of those things, we try to use mediation that the police department can mediate the, the issue between neighbors and resolve it that way.
As long as the waiver process is airtight, I'm cool with it.
Absolutely.
No. Go ahead, Mayor Porter.
Go ahead.
He said, he was pointing to you.
He said, go ahead.
Oh, um, I think to answer Councilwoman McCarthy's inquiry on someone looking at a horror movie and screaming and yelling out, um, I guess because of what I see on page five, which it has the maximum allowable noise level. So you have a, you know, you have a blueprint here. And I'm sure when the officers come out, whether it's somebody that you hear next door yelling during a horror movie or somebody having a concert in their backyard doing a cookout, they're gonna come out with their no, noise meters and do their job. And if it doesn't reach seventy-five at day or night, uh, I mean, sixty-five for the residential, they're not gonna issue a ticket or they're not, they're gonna treat it in a, in a way. That's why these standards are here. You have a benchmark of what level of noise is not acceptable. So. So if you do hear someone talking loudly, I mean, they'll come out and do the meter test. But I did have a question, um, if and when this passes, um, is the council gonna be, um, given noise meters? Are we gonna have noise meters? I'm just asking a question.
No, we're not.
We're not gonna have. No, not our jobs, but, I mean, I know in my neighborhood, uh, my wonderful neighbors to my right and my left, before I even wanna, um, call anybody for noise, I'll have my noise meter out, oh, it's loud, but it doesn't pass, you know, it's not over the allowable.
They're not, they're not cheap. So if you want to purchase one, by all means.
It's an app as well.
It's an app?
You, you, you can download an app.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
But we not gonna purchase you one, though?
No, she said it's an app out there. We're gonna use AI. That way I won't, I won't call our law enforcement if, if they're. That way I won't, I won't call our law enforcement if, if they're not up to the limit. That's, that'll save, and ma, matter of fact, uh, maybe we can, um, have the citizens, we can let them know of the app. And they can, um, once they read the law and then they have the app and they're like, well, they haven't reached the maximum allowable noise. Yeah, I'm not gonna call, so. Thank you, Councilwoman Scott, for that.
Typically, what we want is a livable community. Typically, what, what this is basically placed there for is for people who abuse the system on a recurring basis. And that's what you wanted me to look at, that's why proper policing is necessary for this arrangement. Yes, of course, having the rules in there for those who tend to violate the rules more than, than not. We know people are gonna have parties in their personal property. It's just a matter of making sure that they understand that, you know, certain people are gonna have their sleeping or whatever, case maybe working, whatever, and, and some people abuse the situation. So that's what you're really looking for it to be, but I think with appropriate policing, like what the chief is saying, you know, they're gonna monitor it properly and try to mitigate situations so there won't be any issues moving forward. We just gotta have a standardization of rules to follow, to go by. The other thing I wanted to mention on this is to simply in the document itself, it says manager, okay? I think we should put manager or designate in the absence of the manager. I mean, a designate could be someone that's designated by the, the council to do that. So is it, is it in there? It says that, I didn't hear that, okay, I'm sorry if it does say that. So, other than that, I don't have anything else to say, thank you, Madam President.
Isn't this following the county laws as well?
It is.
Yes, it's not, nothing that we're doing.
It's consistent with Prince George's County as well as our local municipalities around us as well.
I just had one more question, um, so the, the numbers, the sixty-five and fifty-five, seventy, those decimals are what the county has?
That is consistent with what Prince George's County has, yes.
And just one final question, does this cover automobiles? Not the music coming from them, but the automobiles?
It does. The exhaust and stuff, it does, it's covered in that ordinance, yes.
Are there any other questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, right now.
Oh, Councilmember Ray Hall?
What was, what was the purpose of, uh, I guess, amending this, this ordinance? Was it, is it a consistent problem or just to bring everything up to date?
It, it is, it is a ongoing off-and-on problem that we've noticed, but more so, the problem is the understanding of the current law that was in place. So what we did was tried to go and get ordinances from different areas and make it so that when the instances happen, that those that are charged with enforcing the law have a better understanding of what the intent is and what the law is, and as well as for the citizens to know what the rules and regulations and laws are of the city to prevent the violations from happening in the first place. And I don't think that was captured in the original ordinance.
Good thinking.
Thank you.
Sometimes I think individuals can file these complaints because of the type of music or whatever they're hearing, they're just not, it's either, it's not what they wanna hear. And a perfect example, one time I came home and somebody was a few doors down were making noise and I was about to call you guys, but then they hit a record that I liked and I said, wait a minute, I can just start cleaning, you know, so...
And what I'll tell you is, um...
And I just wanna be honest, you know? That's just like with the, the one house you talked about, uh, that likes to throw the party. All because people aren't into that type of music, it's a problem. But if you're a music lover, you know, okay, they're gonna have a good time, let them do their thing. You know, I just don't want nobody to abuse the...
Yeah, so the, I, I do wanna also make it, like, almost clear, the, the way that the ordinance was redone does not necessarily change the substance of the order, it clarifies it. So the way that the ordinance was written wasn't pretty clear, so all we did was go back and try to make it clear, adding definitions, adding more clarity to the actual body of the ordinance. But the way that it was always enforced and the way that it was, uh, the intent of it from the beginning has not changed. So this is the same ordinance that the city had on its books, all we did was go back and clean it up.
Okay. Thanks, Z.
That's my concern.
Yes.
The daytime is gonna be eight AM to nine PM. Eight AM in the summertime, people wanna get outside and cut the grass before the sun really, you know, get to beaming. So I can anticipate a neighbor cutting grass about six-thirty. Now, before it was six AM, was the...
Previous time.
Pre, right, the previous time, six AM to eight PM, I mean, eight AM, that's a two-hour window. So within that two hours, you know, the sun is up, beaming, I'm a hundred degrees. That may be an issue for people wanting to cut their grass or water their grass, or whatever they wanna do early in the morning. That may be a problem. And then nine PM before, I think we had did at least ten, but nine PM, that may be, and I know you're saying that's within what the county has, but we also have to still be mindful of our residents as well. So just keep that in mind, that's just...
So...
Wait a minute, let me, let, let him, let him address.
I don't necessarily have a problem with the times, how, how we, what the suggestion was, again, was based off of ordinance that we were able to collect from neighboring jurisdictions, including the county, and that's how we pretty much came up with that. But if the council or the committee, however you all wanna do it, wants to go back and change the time, we typically, when we do get our noise complaints, it's around that eight, nine, ten o'clock hour. And we understand that especially in some parts of the city, we have an older community, and eight o'clock they're in bed, right, and they don't wanna hear riffraff until ten o'clock at night when they're trying to get sleep, or those that have to be up early in the morning don't wanna be up all night until ten o'clock at night because the ordinance said that you can flash your music or have your party until ten o'clock at night. I think that, that's why we made sure to break it down by the different zones, right? Because what some may do in a commercial zone and what is done in a residential zone are two different things. And that was just the only reason, but I have no fight in the matter, I leave that up to the council.
No, I just wanted to make sure that time difference was made aware.
Absolutely.
I yield, um, any other council members? Now, this is, this is just the first reading, we're just asking questions. I know you just came in, good evening, um, I don't know whose hand was first, you or Love? Councilwoman Love?
I'll go after you, Ms. Scott, go ahead.
I just want, I just want you guys to keep in mind of, you don't have to be completely quiet. It's just that the noise just decreased, that's it. Everything, you're still having conversations outside and you're, and you're on your property, you still, it's just that you're decreasing it and respecting who's around you, that's it. Nothing else changes. I have, uh, been running errands all day and I was like, oh, let me hurry up and sneak in and, um, cut my grass. Your lawnmower is not that loud unless you maybe have a real old one, but it's not disturbing. I hurry up, zoom, cut my grass real quick, and it was around eight, eight-thirty, nine, because I still have light over my home. So I snuck it in real fast and it's not extremely loud. It's just you're reducing, and you can do things like that, it's not disturbing your neighbors. That's just giving an example that how it decreased and it's still not overpowering and going over the decimal.
I just wanted to address the... I just wanted to more or less dress, address the, what kind of noise? Because I've had them out, them, I mean neighbors, working on their cars with a boombox out there at nine o'clock or eight o'clock in the morning. So I don't think it matters what you do, I think we need to stay with what the level of the noise is. If they're over that, then it needs to be, then somebody needs to come, which would be NCC, I guess, come and say, sir, you have to do what you say, bring the noise down. But, uh, I just don't want it so, well, if you're cutting grass, it's okay, cause that's not fair either. I don't know what your lawnmower, you might be on a riding lawnmower that's making a lot of noise. So we don't wanna start distinguishing on what kind of noise. Noise is noise, and you may work at night, which at eight AM in the morning, you're sound asleep. So we need to keep the decimals under the, what, the limit that we're supposed to have. I yield the floor. I get a lot.
I just have a question about the, the fee. So first attempt is five hundred dollars, or first offense is five hundred dollars?
I can never hear her.
Is it?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm, I'm assuming that means no warning?
No, no, there is a warning and it's required, you're required to give a warning prior to issuing violations, citations.
Okay. I mean, I would just think about maybe just a tier, five hundred dollars just seems kinda steep for noise, but... What were you saying, is that standard, is that what you're saying?
If I, if I may.
Can you speak up, Ms., Ms.?
Five, five hundred dollars seems kinda steep for a first offense.
I would say that I think just based on experience, that if you're required to give a warning and you don't heed to that warning, you have to have something to stop people from doing it, so to, to change the behavior. And so I'm thinking about situations like on C Pleasant Drive, the loud, the large party that happens that we've had issues with in the past, I'm thinking about situations like that. Also, I would note that when any court is evaluating an ordinance or a law, we must apply the reasonable standard, right? And so, uh, our police officers are required to use in their discretion the reasonable standard. What would be reasonable in the exact circumstances to a reasonable person in that situation, right? And so the, the goal is not to be overzealous or over-enforce. The goal is to make sure that there are corrective actions for those who abuse that. And I'm thinking about just a couple of situations that, that we've had in the past, but it's up, it's, in officer's discretion, just allowed by law, they have to use their discretion when it comes to those things. So if they're out there fining people for using a lawnmower, I think that's problematic, right? Then we need to address the police department. But if they're out there enforcing someone who is blatantly being obnoxious, which in some situations we've had, I think they need reasonable means to enforce the ordinance. And so it's just like this, uh, it's like speed, speed cameras, right? I've been getting so many tickets, I bet you're gonna slow down, right? And so, and we've all have experienced that, right? And so I think that it's a, uh, it needs to be a reasonable way to just curb the behavior. Most times, in my time of enforcing it, enforcing just a noise ordinance, when we speak to people, they tend to comply. Every so often, we have those who don't, and then we, we wanna make sure, from my understanding of reading it, that we're, there's, there's a reasonable means in order to be able to make enforcement, take enforcement action.
My curiosity was, was it five hundred, you have the warning, still seems excessive. However, I respect the expertise on what you think is reasonable. I think to the point of Councilmember Love, it's just like, the, I'm sorry, I'm trying. But the, um, my, my take on the subjectivity of it, I do agree that it should just be what it is, but there is subjectivity if we say, well, we have blatant and we have not, like, like make the language say what it needs to say so that you all can do the job that you need to do.
Go ahead.
When you're thinking, it's learned behaviors that we're dealing with here now. And I'm gonna go back to a behavior specifically for a time of year that's getting ready to approach us very quickly, and that is the fortuitous lie. We understand that fireworks are illegal, but there's a learned behavior that people have had within what they do for years. So if we're going to talk about changing that, there's gonna have to be some forewarning, I think, okay, to that, because that, that is a behavior, and it's gonna happen whether or not, in this case here, we say the realistic laws is illegal to do certain things, but we don't, a lot of cities have been able to curtail that by having, let's see, events that folks can go to, sanction the event by the city. I'm saying, I'm not saying we do that, but that's why they've been able to enforce or get the, the, the learned behavior to change in those areas, cause they had alternatives. So there has to be something offered for that as well, because that's gonna happen regardless of whether we think so or not. So that's something that we had to address.
Okay. Thank you all for your consideration for this, this was the first here, first reading, and it will be continued. So if you have other questions, additional questions, also you can feed them back to Councilwoman Scott. She's the chairperson for the Public Safety Committee, so that way she can revamp or make amendments before the next reading if it's necessary. Thank you, thank you all. And we're gonna move right on to four point two, ordinance for oh twenty-five dash thirteen, the adoption of fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. This is the second reading. I know you just added something tonight, um, I didn't wanna have you to read the whole thing again since we read it last week, but can you please at least give us what was changed from last week?
Yeah, I was gonna say that will have to be either Ms. Logan or Mr. Harris to speak to those changes.
Good evening, the slight change that was made when we adjusted, um, when we pulled money from the contingency line item to add the deputy clerk's position, we, uh, finance had to make sure...
We can't hear, it's like a funny echo or something, I can't hear, oh, okay, okay.
Um, we made some, we made slight changes when we added the additional funds from contingency that was requested to go to the deputy clerk's position. We needed to make sure the FICA and, uh, the other numbers from contingency just back, just was correct that we took. So that's the only change, we just made sure that the FICA stuff in the clerk's line items were updated and that the contingency lineup was proper, the proper number was placed in the contingency line item. After we removed the sixty thousand dollars for the deputy clerk position and added it back. That makes, that makes sense.
Okay, that makes sense, no, it's just when, when we're here for a meeting, a lot of us, the council and mayor, we read it prior to. So if a change is made while we're here, it's hard to flip through sixty-something pages to see exactly what was changed, so I just wanted you to make sure you gave us what was changed. Does anyone object to not reading the full thing again? Everyone's okay with, okay, so you can just give the...
A summary?
Yes, please.
Okay. Um, ordinance number oh dash twenty-five thirteen, introduced by City Council on May fifth. The second reading is tonight, May twelfth, an ordinance to adopt budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six to provide for the establishment of budgeting for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. That's your summary? Did you want me, you said a summary?
That's it.
That's it? So it will be effective for July one, two thousand twenty-five, ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-six. I think that's important to note, so.
Um, thank you, I'm sorry. I'm gonna ask if we can get, um... I'm going to ask if we can get, um, an approval for this budget tonight? Make a motion, please? Thank you. Can you get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I did not hear.
Raynard was made the motion, McCarthy seconded it. Now, questions, comments? Hands, Council, Councilwoman Kearney?
Yes, I have, uh, four amendments and I would like to propose tonight and I can do them one at a time.
And four amendments that she would like to propose tonight and can she list them one at a time?
I'm not trying to at all, matter of fact. The, the, um, the first proposal is that I want to propose that, oh, I move that we move, um, that we do not apply the, uh, across the board COLA and instead we hold COLA for salaries above fifty thousand and move those funds to the reserve. I move that we do not apply across the board COLA and instead we hold COLA for salaries above fifty thousand and move those excess funds to reserve.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to repeat it, okay? She's proposing, Councilwoman Kearney is proposing that we make an amendment to hold off on the COLA, okay? Cost of living increase for salaries that's over fifty thousand. So any salary, anyone who makes over fifty thousand will not get an increase. They won't get the COLA. If you make under fifty thousand, you will receive the COLA. Okay, that's the first one. Move the fo, to reserves so that we can start building a reserve for a rainy day. Okay, that's the first one. Did you get that? Who make, who's? Wait a minute, wait a minute, she's, she's not done, she's not done, she's got four.
I think she should do them separately.
So that's the first one, that's the first one.
Can we comment after, after each one? Go ahead, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
Let her, let Councilwoman Kearney give you, they will be separate, they will be separate, but I want you to get them all out. Okay, so that the full council can hear what the amendments are. They will be separate. Okay, so we're going to vote on them individually. Okay, but I want everyone to hear them out. Then you can ask your questions based off of one, two, three, or four, just in case you didn't hear the whole thing. Okay? Okay, okay, so you got the first one, everybody clear? Okay.
The second, uh, amendment, I move that we keep the, uh, events budget and public engagement at the fiscal year twenty-five levels at seventy-five thousand and move excess to reserves.
Events, e, e, events for public engagement will stay at seventy-five thousand and move the remaining balance to the reserves. Okay?
The difference of five thousand.
Five thousand dollars. That's number two, okay? Number three?
This one people will get mad at. I move that we adjust the council PD budget from fifteen thousand to ten thousand and economic development department's PD budget from eleven-five to ten thousand.
Professional development.
Adjust that to ten thousand?
Each and economic development department from eleven-five to ten thousand. Remain into reserves.
Okay, so let me repeat it just to make sure because I didn't hear the actual second part. For professional development for the council to drop it from fifteen thousand to ten thousand per, per council and mayor, okay? Well, council, not the mayor, I'm sorry, council. And economic development, I didn't hear the dollar amount.
Eleven-five to ten.
Eleven-five to ten. And how mu, what's the difference on that? No, for the council.
It'll be thirty-five.
Thirty-five plus the fifteen.
Thirty-five difference.
Total.
Five each.
Five each for the council, so it'll be thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
And then?
One five.
Okay.
One point five.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, okay? And number four? Did you get that? Okay, number four.
I move that the salaries for newly proposed positions be capped at fifty thousand.
For the new positions?
Yes.
Be capped at fifty thousand? All new positions?
The two new positions, deputy city clerk and the outreach coordinator for public engagement.
For the, okay, deputy clerk and for the public engagement?
Yes.
Outreach, okay, outreach. Okay. They'll be capped at fifty thousand?
Sixty and sixty.
Sixty and sixty, so that's twenty thousand and that money will go to the reserves as well. Okay, now, everyone clear on all of those? Now you can start asking your questions or making your comments.
That would be during the motions, right?
Well, we got a motion so far on the table for.
But she's propelled, proposing an amendment to the motion, so.
Let's do the first.
She would need to make the individual motions. Then we would call for a second and then we would ask questions and then go for a vote.
Okay, so your amendments, so your amendments are on the table. Councilwoman Kearney, amendments are on the table. The first one? Make a motion.
I move that we do not apply across the board COLA and instead hold COLA for salaries above fifty thousand and move the excess funds to reserves.
Yeah, we're time to write the motion.
Yeah, she's typing them up. Councilwoman Scott? So to be clear, if the salary is fifty thousand, they would still get the COLA?
Yes.
Okay. But it's, if it's fifty thousand and one dollar, they would not get the COLA? Okay. So we're going to vote? Is it any? I don't know, that's why I was, any more question? You asked the question, but I didn't know if anybody else had a question for that particular one.
I can give rationale.
Each one. She did the motion. Scott seconded it. That's the motion that's on the floor right now for the first one.
So I'm against, um, the first one because I would like to hear your rationale, um, on not rewarding our hardworking employees, whether they make fifty or under fifty. Um, we're trying to retain employees. We, we're having, um, a challenge trying to attract employees. We don't have an economic development, we don't have a city manager, we're losing police officers. So I think it's, if we work hard enough, we'll find enough money to reward these employees. I'm not for not rewarding people who are working very hard for the city.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm not finished, I'm not finished, I'm not finished. We have some momentum now in this city and I don't want to see us go back over one point four, one point five percent for our employees. We need to retain our employees. And I'm, I'm just not for that. That's, that's one thing that I don't want to take money out of our, our employees are out there working hard. They're not, first of all, if you look at the compensation study, and I know we're a municipality, I know we're not doing great right now in terms of our revenues, I know we have to increase those. But I think that's the job of, um, the elected officials up here and, and some other folks to work hard to bring some more revenue to the city. So, um, we're going backwards over one point five percent, which frankly, I just, I yield the floor.
Councilwoman McCarth, um, McCarthy?
Um, I am, I'm just trying to open my bank account, sorry. I, um, s, s, so on the surface, it sounds like a good idea. It sounds like a good idea. And I would even question maybe hold, consider merit versus cost of living, which one you would want to hold. But I, I think that would need to be checked for legal sufficiency. Um, because how do you separate the employees like that, right? Like, I, I don't know if we could legally say, because you make this much money, you can't get a cost of living. It actually is a good idea, but I don't know that we could legally do it. Any other questions or comments?
I would just like to hear, why is it a good idea?
So the majority of the people who are in those positions that are making over that amount have been here for some time and they have gotten the constant increases where some of those people who haven't, maybe haven't been here as long and haven't been seeing those step ups, they could benefit from it. They're making, most of them decent wages. When you talk about like the department heads, they may not be up to par with the compensation study, but they're livable wages. I should say that, I'm sorry. They're livable wages compared to the people who are making under fifty thousand, right? But like, I don't want us to get into a place where we're discriminating against people because, oh, you're making over fifty, so, you know, you should be good. So I just, I, I, I don't know. I, I would caution us. But I, but again, I thought it was a good idea because some of those people have constantly been rewarded over the years. Yes?
Okay, so I agree that we have hardworking employees and I actually looked at the budget and the status of the city and not a person. And so that's the first. So I want to reject the idea that I'm not trying to reward hardworking employees. My rationale for this is that there is some uncertainty when it comes to city finances. I actually looked at the median income for the area in C Pleasant and even on C Pleasant Gov where it's stated fifty-one for just this area, so that's how I actually got the number. Second, it's not clear that the city can afford COLA at this time, here's why. Quote from the financial manager or director themselves as a weakness in the strategic planning discussion, lack of funding sources, uh, and there is not a clear, clear path for financial growth year after year. Quotes. Uh, we have a greater increase for merit. We need to balance COLA with the agreed upon strategic plan for fiscal responsibility. We're being conservative with revenue, but I'm searching for conservative measures with expenditures. There is a need for careful consideration of the annual increases on future funding. Uh, we added a COLA in fiscal year twenty-five. When I looked at it, this year fiscal year twenty-six proposed budget shows a greater increase, in fact, one hundred percent change in merit compared to last year. Upon comparison, it is also higher to give the merit than it is to give the COLA. Moreover, the city has a low financial reserve and there is no proposed plan to increase the reserve. So that is the rationale for that one. And also, it's not to say that when we do have clarity post any budget approval that we cannot consider making sure that we adjust for COLA. And it's not uncommon in a financial downturn that you hold COLA.
Well, before impacting, as you say, I forgot the comment you made about not looking at, at a certain individual. I'd rather see us look at the city council's budget and cut that as much as we can to reward our employees. Because without our employees, wha, what are we as a city? Any of our employees, what are we? We're nothing. We, we, we having trouble filling positions now. We have turnover now. Let's look at this, let's look at the, the budget of this, this elected body up here before we cut our employees.
I gave, I gave four amendments, one of them did look at the council.
Well, let's cut some more.
I didn't look at people. It was hard to figure out where to cut because there were not enough explanations in areas to figure out how to adjust. So the places where I did propose amendments, they were for the health of the city. If we do not have money, we won't have any employees, we won't have a government.
Well, let, let's cut, let's cut up here and I do like your third, um.
Okay, wait, wait.
I do like the third one.
Point of order.
I'm just, I'm just agreeing.
We're just working on the first one.
No, no, I'm just making the comments.
You, you feel, state, state is not proper, so right now, state with.
No, she mentioned, she, she did mention that she made cuts to the, to the city council.
Point of order. Point of order.
She did make a comment, I'm just commenting on that.
Points of order.
I'm out of order.
Thank you. I, I was, I did not see, um, Mr. Harris, you had your hand up, I did not see your hand. Mayor Porter mentioned that you had your hand up, please.
Um, so just for clarification, I think we need to get, um, legal advice, um, because as a matter of law. I'm, I'm sorry, can, can you hear me now? Um, I think for clarification, we need to probably get legal advice because I believe that you, when applying COLA in an organization under federal law, you can't apply it to some and not others. So how it, how it's applied, so we just need to, uh, get clarification on how that works. And, uh, CFO may have more information on it than I did.
And, I mean, do you have clarification on that? Because in his absence, I would, so, I would amend it to be applied as a bonus.
Good evening.
Formerly with the former human resource director concerning withholding COLA for, um, employees. And it was made clear to me that COLA will have to be applied, cannot be applied indiscriminately. It has to be applied to all employees.
Understood.
Or none at all.
Okay.
Okay.
I can amend that. Then the diff, the COLA for, the COLA for EJD employees, that amount, ac, across the board, I'm saying no COLA. And I'm saying I would take the total for the COLA and apply it to bonuses, which we had. This is not the first time I've brought up the issue of reoccurring expenses compared to one time. I'm not opposed to giving people just do and pay in light of our financial situation in this, in the means of one-time payments until we start figuring out our financial health. That said, that total amount, I would want that to go in the form of bonuses.
We put in a bonus already.
I understand, but if I'm taking away the COLA, my goal is to increase the bonuses for EJD to keep that same line balance is what I'm trying to do.
I'm, I'm wanting to make sure I'm clear. You're saying for EJD, but what about, if you're saying to cancel it across the board for everybody? You're saying for everyone? Cancel COLA and in, do a bonus for EJD?
The way that is coming up now is going to sound indiscriminatory because of the way that I've already proposed the amendment, okay? So that's why I'm trying to search for the words. But essentially what I'm saying is, I think that EJD, some of the employees don't have a livable wage. I think that it is unjust to have a salary of forty thousand. Last time we met on nineteenth, et cetera, any other meeting, I proposed that we start doing bonuses for those employees. We did, we, and even, um, I think it was also Councilwoman McCarthy or someone else also agreed, which is why we applied bonuses from some other item to EJD employees, okay? And I'm saying that in that same vein, I think that those employees deserve more money. I don't think that we have the financial health across the board to keep doing the COLA. We did COLA once, we're doing merits now from FY twenty. We did COLA once, we're doing merits now from FY '25 to FY '26, and I think that we should consider the fact that the merit is higher, so we should keep that. Something has to give, and I don't have enough justification for capital outlay. I asked for, I asked for examples down there, there are things that I asked for that I don't have, so we, I couldn't find the money. Everybody up here can say no, and that's fine, but the amendment is, the proposal is the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Scott?
So we're clear that she just cutting COLA all the way around? She's cutting COLA all across the board, that's, that's, that's what we're, that's, that's the ending result of the motion? Okay.
I just want to be clear. Point of order, I believe, is the correct. So, there is a motion on the floor. There was question, there was discussion, and now she is trying to amend the motion after the, amend the amendment. And that amendment is cut COLA across the board and put that money in a reserve.
I can do that one step, I can do the second part for the increase of EJD separately, but the amendment, the amendment is correct. Cut COLA across the board, put those monies in reserve.
Okay, so, cut COLA, put the money in reserve, I have that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So let me make certain that I have it right for the record. So initially, you stated you wanted to remove COLA across the board and hold the COLA for salaries over 50,000. So now you're just saying cut COLA across the board. Okay, I just wanted to be clear.
Can't do that? Didn't she just say you could?
That's why she cut it. She cut COLA, everybody, no one, even if you make 50 or whatever, cut, cut the COLA for everybody.
So we can do that, Ms., Ms. Logan?
Come to the, to the microphone.
Yes, you can withhold it from everyone, but not apply it indiscriminately.
Can we not just fill some of the jobs that we were aspiring to do?
Stay with what is on the floor right now, it's a motion on the floor, let's stay with that right now. So the motion is to cut COLA across the board.
No, so there was a first motion that was,
50?
Right, no, the first motion, it was, yeah, that was the first motion.
First motion was, the first motion was,
So I'm dealing with this motion that's dealing with the removal of the COLA across the board. Because it was initially stated across the board for salaries over 50,000, we have the first vote on that one, and then we have to vote on the amended. So you can't just strike it out, you have to vote on each of those.
Okay, so we're going to vote now, if there's no other questions, we're going to vote now for 50,000 and less. They'll keep COLA, and 50,000 and higher, they won't have COLA. That's the, that's the amendment right now. Wait a minute, we heard what she said, we have to vote. Hold on, Councilwoman Jones, hold on. We're going to vote. It's, we have to vote on it, Councilwoman Jones, we have to vote. We all heard what was said against the law, I don't think anyone's going to do anything against the law. Let us vote. Can you open, do you have a question, Councilwoman Raynor?
You just, the, the amendment to do it across the board, does it need to be a motion made on that, or?
No. Go ahead, Mrs. Ball.
So the first one is open for voting. And I'm going to prepare the second one.
I don't see anything. Did anybody else's pop up?
I did, refresh it.
Yours popped up, okay. Thank you. Hold on, I'm going to refresh. Okay.
You don't have it?
The motion reads different.
Motion to remove the COLA across the board and hold the COLA for salaries over 50,000. That's what's the initial motion, am I not?
That's correct.
To hold the COLA,
For salary, so she said,
Which is the illegal part.
Okay, when you said across the board, that's what, okay, all right. Hold on. That's what was confusing, because it said across the board. It didn't say that initially, it was two separate things. Across the board was the second time.
Okay, I took it out and didn't put it back, I apologize.
Let her fix it, let it fix, let it fix. I believe you're going to have to vote again because the way the words were.
Now, I have it right, I believe. Motion to remove the COLA for salaries over 50,000. It popped up because I closed it, and then I reopened it, so that removes the votes.
Thank you. Now she's going to do the,
I can't hear you. That was a motion by Councilmember Kearney, I don't think you have a second for that one. Okay, she's second, the first one, I didn't hear the second for that one. Okay.
It didn't pop up for me, I'm going to refresh.
The motion on the floor.
I think we good, yeah. Okay. Measure passes five to two.
Your motion.
Second motion for the events for public engagement to stay 75,000.
Fiscal year 25 levels.
And to put the reserve for 5,000.
Correct. Move that we keep the events budgeted in public engagement at fiscal year 25 levels, uh, for community events at 75,000.
When she says 75,000 for the events, that's what the city does, like, any event that they do. Not her event or his event, it's not that.
For the city events, those were the city events for public engagement, to keep the level, keep the amount at what it was for 2025.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Not hearing any.
Measure passes, um, five to, well, five to two.
Councilwoman Kearney, can you read your motion for the third one?
Yes, a move that we adjust council professional development budgets from 15,000 to $10,000 each, and economic development department from 11.5 to 10,000. Move the funds to reserve.
Can we get a second? Wait a minute, can we get a second?
I don't know what I'm seconding.
Your second, Councilwoman Scott's second. Now, questions?
Which, um, that's 5270, professional development? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Love?
Okay, this is a question. So, so this will be for our events that we have and our travel?
Professional development.
So that's just travel for the classes?
Professional development.
I wanted to explain.
Yes, professional development. Any type of professional development, whether you're going to MML, Wallowala, Washington, wherever.
Yes.
$10,000.
Is that what it is right now?
It's 15.
It's a 15.
One, one second, did you have a question, Councilwoman Scott?
I just wanted to have clarity for who's watching at home, just similar to the same question, that's, that was my initial question, just to explain what is professional development is used for.
Thank you, sorry. Sorry, I just, um, the same thing, I just wanted, uh, that was my original question, um, just for people that's watching and, and may want to, um, want to know what is professional development used for, so I just wanted us to explain that, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
I just want to give some, um, insight. So I'm looking at my, uh, budget as of 3/25. Um, and so in the calendar year, I have attended, one, two, three, four, four conferences, well, one is pending, but four conference registrations, um, and travel, and travel. And so I still have a little bit of money that has to come out for the upcoming conference. But, but even with all of those conferences, I would still have enough to do what she's saying. Now, it's tight, and I do get scholarships for certain travel, right? Like, I'll reach out to organizations that, you know, um, if I'm doing professional development, if they offer scholarships, then I do that. And sometimes I might take a, a cheaper, uh, a cheaper flight, or a cheaper hotel, or whatever, for that reason. But I say all that to say, I'm looking at it right here, and if I was to take, if that 5,000 was cut right at this moment, I would still have enough for all the conferences that I attend. And again, that is four conferences throughout the whole year, and I still have enough. It, it is manageable, it's tight, and it's going to be tight when some of those conferences move to cities that are more expensive, but it is manageable, so I just wanted to say that.
Any other questions that I missed? Go ahead, Councilwoman Scott. Thank you.
So you, you said that you apply for scholarships, so without the scholarships being applied, would you, will, will it still be manageable? That's the first question.
Well, the major scholarship that I do get is for a conference that is, um, near, it's, it's near here. And so, um, the city wouldn't pay for that lodging regardless. Um, but it would still be manageable, but again, it would be tight. So like, for instance, we would need to figure out the city's situation when it comes to, uh, for example, NLC, the fall conference. We almost always sign up for that at the last minute, so airfare is always way more expensive than what it needs to be. Like, we should be booking those flights July 1 when the budget is passed. Like, so that we're not, because I looked here, and the cost of my, my flight for last, for, for that conference last year should have not been that amount. So if we are going to make these cuts, we need to make sure that we're putting procedures in place as well that will protect us. So like, I'm not against making the cuts, but we've got to make sure we stay on it, that we're looking for deals, that we're signing up for different rewards and stuff like that, so that the city, you know, is not always coming out of pocket with these extravagant amounts of money.
Just want us to keep in mind of her response.
Any other questions, comments? Not hearing any. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure that I gave rationale, that I actually did look at actuals and what people have spent to date, and considered what the cost would be for MML, and given that that MML is very close to July 1, which would be another operating budget, and no one would have hit the 10,000 mark, or pretty much, almost no one would hit the 10,000 mark. That's why I made that, as well as we're not getting any additional opera funds and things like that. So I think we should be conservative with that budget, as well as a point that I don't have to make, because I agree, and I have written it down that you made, is that we're not being good steward of funds when it comes to last-minute bookings. Uh, that the city has to take on those financial responsibilities.
To make sure that we are more aware of when the conferences are, making arrangements early so that we can get those deals, um, and not booking at the last minute where you miss the early bird specials, or you're booking your flight later. Um, making sure that if you sign up for reward points, so that those things will help. When you're traveling, the city won't, you know, have to take on all those fees. I'm even add carpool as much as possible if you're going to different things. We do have a city vehicle, if it's something local, that we all can go in one vehicle because we're leaving from the same area. But, you know, if you want to drive, you drive, but, you know what I'm saying, I'm just saying that those are things that we can kind of manage, um, okay?
The only last thing I'll say is, it made it comparable to the other departments, given that there were proposed positions where one department was getting like 15,000, and that was for two people almost, so 10,000. thousand, and that was for two people, almost, so ten thousand made it such that across departments, even the city council was being comparable.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Not hearing any, Mrs. Ball? Thank you.
We address the economic development? That's all one package? Both?
Councilman Jones, the motion is on the floor, read the motion.
Yeah, but that wasn't discussed?
Yes, it was.
Nobody asked any questions, it doesn't?
It was, it was, it was, come on.
I mean...
He is adopting the second reading.
Measure passes unanimously. Thank you. Councilwoman Kearney, your fourth motion amendment?
The last one, I proposed that new salaries for positions for, uh, deputy clerk, and the outreach coordinator capped at fifty thousand.
Did everyone hear that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So the motion is on the floor, do we get a second? Now, if you have any questions, you have a question, Councilwoman Love? You good?
I'm gonna read it.
Okay.
And that's when I'll decide when to vote, 'cause I don't understand what y'all, when y'all, I don't understand what you're saying. It's just muffled to me.
It's questions now, we're open for questions, you have a question on this motion that's on the floor? The proposed is for the two salaries for the deputy clerk, and for the outreach coordinator to be at, be capped at fifty thousand, they both was at sixty, they cap them at fifty thousand. That's it. That's the motion. And remove those funds to reserve, let me add that part, everything that we've been talking about was going to the reserves.
I got a question.
Go, go ahead.
One of those, those are two new, uh, positions. While we cutting so much of everything else, things that involve us, to show our concern and our focus on moving this city forward, that's the whole thing while we're doing this. I, I question, uh, one of those positions. One of them, I, I think we definitely need, the other one, I think we can do without.
Right now, we're not doing without. The salary for the deputy clerk, and for the outreach coordinator was sixty thousand dollars, that's what was proposed in the budget.
In the budget.
Okay? We're not taking it out, just asking to drop the salary across, to the two positions to fifty thousand, keeping both positions, keeping both positions, but to drop the salary from sixty to fifty.
So this ain't the time for me to bring up the, the other position?
You can make a motion.
She can make a motion.
You can make a motion.
What other position, I don't know what you're talking about.
One of the positions, well, I'll wait till she finish hers, and then I, and then I, I wanna say something before we pass it.
She wants to make a motion. Move the deputy clerk position, that's what she said.
That's a separate motion, that part of it.
Right, oh, that's a separate motion? Okay, right now, let's stick with what we got on the...
Okay.
Okay, fifty thousand for the two positions. Are there any other questions? Comments, concerns, Councilman Jones?
I don't have any concerns, but, um, I guess, once again, we're having trouble filling positions, how did you come up with fifty thousand?
Well, for the coordinated position, I actually researched in the region, and found that coordinated positions to be arranged on the low end of forty, like forty-five, and on the high end, up to seventy, given that the position description wasn't flush, and we asked for recommendations to that position, and considering the strategic plan, what we'd be asking for that position, I made the recommendation to put it at fifty, to move the remaining funds to, um, to reserve, especially because that position would be an assistant position, so that is why. The second position, the deputy clerk, I felt that deputy clerk position would probably be on the chopping block tonight, and so I made the recommendation to put it at fifty thousand, because at committee meeting, we discussed what it looks like to be in College Park for that position, as well as in, uh, Greenbelt, they had a salary around sixty-ish range, a little bit above, however, when we looked at our city clerk's position description, it mirrored a staff assistant, it was incorrect, going from the adjusted description, which it should be, and looking at the overlap of what it would be in another area, which is more, more population than ours, work is a little bit different, I made the adjustment for fifty thousand, in hopes that we can keep that position in the budget. That's my rationale.
So that fifty, is that, you mentioned something about seventy, which position was that, you said, the range?
Depends on the area for the outreach coordinator, and the position description varied, and it would've gone up to seventy-six, given what we were doing for that position description, on the low end, and even, well, really median would've been forty-six, I put it at fifty, trying to make sure that we had twenty thousand to go to reserve. So I had a balance of, what was the position description, what was the suggested assistant salary for those positions, as well as what do we need in our reserves?
Okay, I just, was curious, um, when people throw out salaries, I just wanted to hear how they came up with the numbers.
Are there any other questions? Comments, concerns? Not hearing any? Wait a minute, Councilwoman Jones?
I'm sorry, I know that wasn't part of your motion, so if someone wants one, but not the other, they, it's no separation, right, it's just one, this, I'm not gonna admit I'm, that's what it is, the...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
My motion is to keep both positions and cap them.
Yeah, but you wanna cap both, so if someone wants to cap one and not the other, this motion does not address that, correct?
Correct.
Right, but you would still vote on this, and then you would make your other motion, once her, four motions like that.
Thank you.
Going in order.
Thank you, okay.
Any questions? It's open.
It ain't come up yet.
It's open, already voted.
Click the change vote. I'm sorry. And then click whatever.
It's a motion on the floor. Measure passes six to one. Thank you, Councilwoman Kearney, for those amendments, if you have any other comments, concerns, in reference to this, second reading of this budget?
I would like to make a mo, I would... I would like to make a motion that, uh, one of the positions that are on the table, is not done at this time. I did some research, I was in one of my committees, and what I did was, uh, went with, to MML for the cities that were this size, or bigger, and one of the salaries exceeds what everybody else makes, and so I think that we need to take that in consideration at this time, and in one of the positions, I think is very much needed, so, do, do I need to name the position now? The deputy clerk is the one I would like to see held off at this time, because, uh, I feel that if you do the research on how much the city clerks make across the board, there is a ceiling to that, and that was told to me, I didn't bring my, my briefcase in here now, but, uh, that, that, that job, I ain't even talking about the, the deputy, I'm talking about that job is above now what anybody else makes. The, the, uh, so I think right now, we can do without the deputy clerk position.
Is that your motion? Your motion is...
Yes.
To do without the deputy clerk's position?
At this time.
At this time.
And if we, if, if it comes up, we can do, uh, the amendment, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm clear, to do away with the deputy clerk's position is your, is your motion?
And not, and not the, and not the other one?
Okay, I got you.
Okay.
Okay. So, everyone heard Councilwoman Love's motion to do away with the deputy clerk's position? That's the motion that's on the floor, can we get a second?
Can we not say do away and say eliminate?
Eliminate. Eliminate the position.
That's the word I should've used.
Eliminate the position, it's fine.
It's, it's public record, I just wanted to...
Thank you, thank you for clarifying.
...understand what you're saying.
To eliminate the position for the deputy clerk is the motion that's on the floor right now, made by Councilwoman Love. Is there a second? Okay, are there any questions, comments, or concerns to this motion? Any comments, questions?
I have a question, um...
Yes, Councilman Jones?
Councilwoman Kearney, did you mention something about the job description for the deputy clerk?
Yes, Councilmember Jones, I did. I did.
So, what were your findings when you received both the deputy clerk and the clerk job descriptions?
I wonder if I should move this to chairperson for government affairs?
So, one, the job description for the city clerk was incorrect, so let's start there. The job description for the city clerk was incorrect, okay? And we found that the, the cities that we, uh, researched, um, they did have deputy clerk positions, or people, you know, the departments were not like a department of one, okay? Now, the salary was questionable, because some of the duties were different, um, you know, every city is different, so like, we kinda did like a summary of duties, um, and so we will be bringing those, once they're completed, bringing it forth, you know, for the council to see, um, but what we kinda discussed, we felt that the position was needed, um, but we felt that, and I don't wanna misspeak for anybody else, but from my memory, we felt, we felt the position was needed, um, and we came up with what the duties would look like, um, because there's been some inaccuracy in that department about duties, um, who's, who was really responsible for what, because at one point, the staff assistant was under the, uh, clerk's department, because remember, at one point, the clerk's department was under the city council, so there was a lot of like, changes that need to be made, so we literally had to start at the top, change the city clerk position, change the deputy clerk position, make sure that the staff assistant position was accurate as well, so we had to like, change all of them, so that's why it's not here tonight, because there was a lot of it, and we had to go over and do it again, but the overall findings was, we believe the position was needed, um, I wasn't married to a salary, me personally, um, and obviously, Councilwoman Kearney wasn't either, um, because the salaries were different in all of the cities that we looked at, but, um, we did think that it was needed for the amount of work that we're trying to do, and, you know, what we're doing here in the city.
I think you just gave me the, the reasons that we shouldn't move forward on that, I think all those reasons that you just claimed, or you just researched, makes it so, that's one position that we don't need right now, I stress that, because you can't compare Bowie to here, you just can't do it, it's a bigger city, that clerk may be, that, that deputy clerk may be doing something totally different than what aspires to be done here. Totally different.
Okay, well, that's fine, that's your opinion, um, we also did, worked on a strategic plan, we talked about succession plans, we say that that's our goal, and that's what we're trying to do, and then we're come here, we come here trying to implement that, create a succession plan, but then we're fighting against it, so I don't know, like, is that what we really want, do we really want a succession plan, or do we not want a succession plan? So like, we, we considered all of that, when we were making the decision.
Yeah, I was there.
I'm talking about...
In the committee.
Councilwoman Scott? Nobody had a handle on it, okay?
Shouldn't we see what you guys came up with before we make a decision?
She just stated, they've been working on it in the committee, they just had the meeting, they haven't finished, so once they finish meeting, then it will come back to the council.
So that's my point, my, if, if I was able to finish, what I'm stating was, before we make a decision on the position in whole, we should see it first, that's, that's what I was...
Okay.
That's what I was getting at.
Okay.
I was gonna say, it, I wanna make sure that I'm clear, at least on my proposal and why, outside of, aside from the succession planning, the position description that the city had on file was less than, and more, more comparable to, but also less than, the duties of staff assistant, they did not reflect at all the duties of the current sitting city clerk for the City of C. Pleasant, and going through the actual duties of the City of C. Pleasant's city clerk position, it reflected actions in those other cities, though not in totality, the, the descriptions that did reflect, reflected that we did need, such as that city, assistant clerk, the duties that were irrelevant were like, they send out postage stamps, or something like that, that was irrelevant, we don't need that, that was also for city staff, which is why the consideration for, what's the bulk of the duties outside of the, of the duties as assigned, or not essential functions, those things were considered, while I do agree that you probably need to see the positions, the decision that was made was based on the actual duties of the city clerk, regardless of what is on paper, because paper on city, in the city isn't accurate.
And I do wanna make mention, of course, the position would not be filled until the description is seen by the whole council and approved, so like, there are steps, right? Whenever we create a new position, when I've been here, maybe with the exception of one time, the description came after the approval of the position, because we had to work out the kinks of like, what we wanted that position to look like.
So, I'd rather see...
And that's fine.
...you know, first, and see if it's needed, you know, and, and determine, as a council, make that decision, if it's needed, before we actually agree about a position.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
I just wanted to name that the positions were in the first read, my amendment was simply the salary cap, I did not propose both positions, I simply... I simply responded to the positions that were proposed in the budget that was provided to me.
Plus, when you talk about what this city clerk, our city clerk does, and used to do, she's doing technically less. Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me finish. Let me finish. I'm naming four things that she used to do that she does not do now. It's been reassigned to either our finance department, to our, what, the engagement, public engagement, those certain things that she ain't got to answer to, which frees her up to do what her job entails, which is dealing with the legislation. And I'm probably not going to name everything that she currently does.
Position, the position.
I didn't say no name.
Keep saying she, position, the position.
What that position does now. That position was handling, on a temporary basis, they were doing the taxes, you know, collecting the taxes. They ain't doing that now. It's been reassigned to a different department. So you have to take that in consideration before you now put a whole new salary in there for us to have to deal with. I just say, hold off on that at this time. That's all I'm saying.
Before I speak, does anybody else have a question, comment, concern? You have anything you want to say? Councilwoman McCarthy? Okay. My comment is.
Yes, ma'am.
A position of someone's salary in a position is not a reason of what someone makes for you to say that another position can't be there. Because that person makes, that position holds too much money, or they make too much money. What a person makes is based off of how long they've been there and their experience. So we want to be careful in how we word things, okay? And I'm saying that on a public record, because that can be a lawsuit. You say to withhold position because the current clerk makes above the pay salary of everyone else.
You did.
You did.
You did.
You did.
You did.
And I just want to caution you with it, that's all. And it's recorded, it is recorded. I just wanted to caution you on it, okay? I just want to caution you on it. I heard your, I heard your motion, I just wanted to caution you on that.
I did a comparison. Did I not?
You did not.
I did not. I did not say that it was given to me what the salaries were in different other municipalities. That's what I said. What that person does now, or even get a raise to do, I'm fine with whatever y'all want to do with that. I'm talking about the deputy position, which is a whole different position. Y'all wanted to put a cap on that. I'm just saying, we don't need the position.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
I yield the floor.
I appreciate the clarification. Is any other questions or comments? The vote is open. I know.
Motion fails, one to six.
Are there any other comments? Amendments, questions to the budget?
So I know that that was a lot. I want to know if we were able to look at the numbers. The way they're written in the ordinance, let me make sure I'm pulling it up. The way they're written in the ordinance gives full expenditures for certain departments. The only department that's listed in the actual ordinance that would be affected is public engagement. Because you see how like expenditures, it only gives like the biggest departments in the budget. Do we have correct numbers before we vote?
I don't have that ordinance, I'm sorry.
I do not have that ordinance that you're looking at, that break out the numbers. I did talk with Mrs. Ball, and she told me that when it comes to the city government, certain departments are grouped in city government, public safety and public engagement are listed separately. So if you do process elimination.
So again, yeah, the only thing that would be affected would be public, well, no, because the COLAs.
Yes, the COLAs have to come out. We have to rerun the numbers and pull out. When I was doing a brief, total amount of COLAs, it came up to less than $60,000. Just the COLAs that would be moving over into the rainy day fund investment.
Okay, so, okay. So are we able to just use the total general fund expenditures and strike out the individual so that the ordinance will be proper? Or is that not something we can do?
You said you wanted to.
Are we able to just put total general fund expenditures without the breakout so that this will be a proper document to vote on? Because if we don't do that, then it's, the document is not proper.
I would have, I can make the changes, but because most of it is going to go under the general category, so the only one that will be, but it won't be 100% accurate. So you can approve it.
Which is why I'm asking, can we strike the actual words and numbers for the breakout and just put the total? So that, so that the legislation is proper? Because the totals are not changing. The expenditures will be the expenditures. And the revenue will be the revenue. But the breakout will be different. And in order to not hold up the process, I'm asking, can we take out those specific lines? Because the numbers are not correct. And once the numbers are correct, maybe add an addendum, I don't know how that works, but I don't know. I'm asking, is that a procedure we can do? If it's not, I get it. I understand you might not want to do it, but legally, is it, can we do that?
In the past, we did approval with amendments, and then the document will come back to you reflecting what those numbers are. Because right now, if I roll public engagement in, the numbers are, it's still going to be the same amount in your budget as far as the total, not necessarily categories, but your total budget number. But to be able to spell it out, we would have had to be a hand plugging in and removing to make certain that we can give accurate.
Right, right, right. But what I.
And I don't have.
But, right. What I asked was, can there just be a total expenditures, general fund expenditures?
We can do that.
The total number?
Yeah.
And approve the budget with amendments?
We can do that. But the document, I will have to change the document, so yes.
Correct. So what I'm asking is, can we approve the total expenditures and then the amendments be made at a later date?
How long does it take though? It wouldn't take long. I can just go in and.
But are we okay with that? I mean, because technically, the motion was already on the floor to approve it, so. But I guess I'm asking, can we approve it with the amendments? And then, which technically, we already did that if we voted on the amendments already. But I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page of what we're doing.
So are you wanting me to change it now, or you just want to do approval with? Okay. Yeah, that's what it appeared to me, too.
No, I'm saying, approve it with the understanding.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So approve it with the understanding that the total is correct. And that the individual just needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
Thank you all for your patience with that. We're going to move on to our reports. Mayor Porter?
Thank you, Madam President. We pretty much went through my report last week at the meeting. My report is in Board Docs. I'm going to highlight a couple of things on it, I think they're, you know, for edification purposes for the citizens that might know. One was a meeting with a financial institution. We've been working very hard, I think in the council, to try to get a financial institution into the city. And we're working vehemently to do that. We know that within the confines of the inner Beltway, we don't have a brick and mortar establishment. Most of what we have here is a teller machines. And we need to have something that's a little bit more available from a standpoint of brick and mortar. We've had those discussions. One company that we're looking at is, we're looking at, and they say we're looking at, before they consider going elsewhere within the county, is Signal Financial Federal Credit Union. I had an opportunity to go to what I feel is a real good meeting with the conference training Prince George's County Procurement Conference on April 2nd. That was good with reference to how the county and other state agencies are trying to move forward on helping us deal with our financial climate at present, and help our cities along in reference to in-citizens employment and other services. An opportunity to go with a literacy call to action, something on April 5th, that deals with the problem of literacy. We have an extreme problem with that across the country, but in specific with our scores in the state of Maryland, as it pertains to C Pleasant as a portion of that. I did have an opportunity to go to the 11th Annual African American Mayors Association Conference, which was a great conference of all the mayors across the country. And again, how they're going to address things with reference to jobs, grants for doing services across the country, referenced again to the political climate. Again, my monthly report is in Board Docs for the citizens' review. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Do you have any questions for Mayor Porter and his report? Not hearing any. Oh, we're at my report. My council president report is in Board Docs along with the April meeting attendance report. If anyone has any questions or comments? You have a question, Councilman Jones?
This is the first time I've seen this. Is this usually in Board Docs somewhere?
Which one?
The one.
The attendance?
The attendance, yeah.
It's been there for several months now.
Several months, okay.
It's a new report.
Okay.
What is it, clear?
On Board Gov for the boards and commissions. So all of your meetings to include your committee meetings, and the attendance is also put in that system so that a report can be generated.
Do we have access to that?
No, you don't, you can't view the attendance. You can only see on Board Gov, but you can't view the attendance.
So we'll have to go to Board Docs to get this report?
I can give you the information. It should be on my report, but I can give it to you. So that you can access it.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Jones, attendance has always been a part of the president's report. It just looks different now. That's all.
Well, being a rookie, this is the first time I've seen it.
Well, I'm just telling you where to look.
Yeah.
Whenever the president gives their report, the council attendance is in there. And that's going to be at the public session, on the public agenda.
Okay. Do we get a free dinner or anything if we have perfect attendance, Council President?
No.
No. Any other questions or comments about my report? Not hearing any, thank you all. Mr. Harris, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Madam President, Mayor, and City Council. My report is in Board Docs along with our department heads. Just to highlight, I do want, again, want to shout out our Public Engagement Department for a very successful C Pleasant day and execution. Recent pictures were just sent out, so you all to review. Other than that, I will answer any questions.
Any questions? Not hearing any? Thank you so much. We have some new business, 6607 Gregg Street. Do you have a question? All right. Who's going to present on this?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is to Mayor Kelly Porter, Mayor of C Pleasant, and City Council members. This is from the Neighborhood Compliance Division on the Appeal Notice V 24-25. To whom this may concern, after reviewing the information in the variance application packet for Application Number V 24-25, the City of C Pleasant Neighborhood Commercial and Compliance Department opposes the request for variance based on the following. The City of C Pleasant Code, Chapter 63, Building Construction 63.6, Adoption of County Building Code. If any provision is not covered by this chapter concerning the construction, erection, alteration to any building or structure within the city, and in that event, the specific provision in the building code for Prince George's County is hereby adopted for the provision in this chapter not covered. Two, Prince George's County Zoning Ordinance, Section 22-442E Table 4, prescribes that each lot shall have front yard of at least 25 feet in depth and a rear yard of at least 20 feet in depth and width.
You've heard that variance. Anybody have any questions?
Is it the front or the backyard that's the issue? It's the back, correct?
It's the backyard that's the issue.
Okay. Okay, so I'm. So I'm pretty familiar with this property. It's been an issue before, and I know Councilwoman Love can speak to it. So what happens now, right? Because they've had issues for years, right? And so now, are they just going to leave it there? Because you're saying we shouldn't grant it? Are they just going to leave it how it is right now, undone, unfinished?
That hasn't been proposed to us, but we will look into it.
I'm done.
If I can also, just real quick, just state for the variance, I mean, it's not our decision regardless. We're just giving our opinion on it. It's ultimately going to depend on Prince George's County, what they do with it, what they do with the granting of it or not. Even if we did agree with the variance request, most likely Prince George's County is still not going to go by, so.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Love, did you have something?
Yes, sir. This situation, this situation was presented a long time ago. And City Manager Janelle Wallace and myself went to the property. And the way they did the backyard, it destroyed the residence yard just right back. She'd put thousands and thousands of dollars. It put water in her house that was close to, it was over a foot. And this particular person, whose yard it was, they had put a lot of money in their home. What was, what came out of all of that by Ms. Wallace is that they were not going to get any permissions for nothing until they made that resident hole. I think I'm trying to use the right words, to make her hole for the money that she lost. She had to pay it because she wasn't going to stay in a house with two feet of water in it. But when we investigated it, we realized it came from what they did in the backyard. The owner was there and agreed to do all of that. But he has kept track of the fact that there's been a lot of changes up here and a lot of changes with the city manager. So they just figured it would go away. And that's not fair to the resident because she's been waiting patiently. So I don't, I might give them permission for nothing. I'm just saying. Fix the situation. That's what you do. Be fair and fix the situation.
Councilwoman Love, you yield the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I yield the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, so. So what I'm saying is, if, whether we okayed or not, if the, and the county does not okay it because it's not going to pass county code, do we require them to demolish the policy, the property? Like, you get what I mean? Like, I think we need to come to a resolve on that. Because if not, we're going to say no. And it's going to sit there like it's been sitting for the last couple of years, looking terrible. And like she said, we change up here, they change over there, and they come back in a couple more years. You know what I mean? So, you know, I don't want to tell the council which way to vote. I mean, because the county's going to do what they're going to do regardless. But we need to, as NCC, figure out what the next steps are after the vote. Because I don't want to see it sit there for another couple of years again. Like, if we saying no right now, get rid of, get rid of the whole thing.
So I heard what you said in reference to the demolition of the property, but that is, that's not something that would be presented by NCC. That's something that the council needs to make a decision on. And once the county, the council makes a decision on it, then of course we would present that to the owner that the council has voted to have the property demolished in accordance to the way that the ordinance is written. And then, of course, he can go through his appeal process and whatever the case may be. So if that is, if this doesn't go through and he has, and, you know, NCC will reach back out to him to see what his plans are for the property, and he doesn't have substantial plans, that's something that we'll, we'll report that back to the council. But from there, if I read the ordinance correctly when it came to the demolition of properties, that's something that's just going to have to come up from the council.
Are there any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Mayor Porter.
I'm sorry.
I'll get with you with this. I mean, I think we're trying to find a relative resolve to this issue that's been lingering. So let the council do what you're going to do on your part. And then let me see if I can, once you're going to meet with this owner.
I didn't understand that, but, okay.
Code enforcement at another time.
Oh, okay. Okay. You had a question? You have a question?
What is the exact issue with the backyard? Like I said, it's my limited vision, so can somebody explain what's the issue?
It's not 20, it's not 20 feet. The backyard, the front yard has to be 25 feet from the, I guess, the street. And then the backyard has to be 20 feet. And it's not 20 feet in the backyard.
20 feet from where?
Like the prop, I guess, the property line to the house.
Okay.
It's a property issue.
So basically, they put the house in the wrong spot on the, in the, on the lot. They didn't measure correctly on the lot. So even though technically here, we could say, sure, the county's going to say no.
When they dug out that backyard of that house, they was taking old telephone books, all kinds of stuff that was just stuffed down in there. And the resident, that, who house faces the other street? She said, you know, because she's been around there a long time. And she said, "All that water that flows that way is going to come into my yard." And it did, into her house. So it's a property issue.
Right, but that's a separate issue than what the code says, right? So whether the house is up to code and whether you're being a bad neighbor, it's two different things. Or a bad actor, I'd say, not doing what the code says. But like, it's two different. So like, that issue needs to be rectified, but them not following the code also needs to be rectified. But they need to be rectified separately. And I, I mean, I want people to make a decision based on what the code says and not based on the fact that we're sad that our resident, you know, got her house flooded. Because that's a separate issue.
Yeah, but then if you allow them to sell that, they're going to sell it fast to get rid of it. And that's just not fair to the resident that had to pay all that money to get her house rectified and livable. She couldn't even live in it.
You have another question on the floor, Councilwoman?
That's all. I yield the floor.
Yes.
A long time.
A long time. A long time.
It's vacant.
Yeah, you can't, I mean, they haven't really not finished. If you look at the pictures of it, the siding hasn't been put on. And people were also squatting, squatting in there. Yes.
So for clarity, Mr. Grant, you said it's the issue of the property line, correct?
I'm sorry?
So for clarity, for my clarity, it's the issue of the property line, correct?
The property, you said?
Property line?
Yes.
In my childish mind, that's the back of the house, right?
Yes.
And the property line is what, where you are or where we are?
It's like this, where I am.
Oh, like where you are?
It's like back where I am.
Okay.
It's like, not even 20 feet.
Okay.
With the renovations they're trying to do, they're not going to move the foundation of the house. But it's actually the deck that's going to be the issue in the back of the house. And also in the front, they're going to extend the porch out, which goes inside of that, those limits.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So do you have a motion to approve or not approve? Anyone want to make a motion? This is the recommendation that the NCC has provided to us.
I move that we table this variance indefinitely and have them go through the county.
So the county, because the property is located in the city's boundaries, you have to give an approval because it's at the county level. So in order for the county to say yes or no, they need a response from the city. So if it's going to be denied, the city manager would then send in a letter stating that the council did not approve the variance request. So we always have to provide a response. We can't just table it.
Okay, so take the ending part of my motion off, and I move that we table this variance indefinitely.
Because their hearing is May the 21st also, so, okay.
Yeah, I want to vote that we table it indefinitely. Now, if it comes back in a different form, is what I'm saying. Like, if it comes back in a different form, that's different. But this particular variance, for this property, the way it's built right now, I don't want it to come back to us, is what I'm saying.
I want to get to the point where I have to make a comment after someone seconded it.
Has, was anyone like to second that motion? Question, Councilman Jones?
In your experience, sir, has the county ever overruled a municipality? If we say no, have a county say, "Oh, it's okay"? Has that ever happened?
In my experience, I've seen it happen a few times, but not a lot, no. They're going to judge on the side of safety. So if it's not safe to do or it causes some type of unjust with the environment or the neighborhood, they're going to deny, excuse me, deny it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Would this tabling it be seen as a denial? Yeah. Let me see. Would this tabling, this variance be seen as a denial? How is this undecided? Is that a yes or a no?
I wouldn't say it would be a denial. I would say we're just, if you're tabling it, you're just saying we're not going to address it at this time.
She said indefinitely.
Indefinitely, but she's saying if it came back in a different way. So, no.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess this is for the city manager. What, of course, if we say no, what's your communication to the county? If we don't make a decision, what's your communication to the county? Or is it?
That you didn't make a decision. If you don't make a decision, then my communication to the county is that no decision was made.
There would be no decision made. It would be no decision made. If you table something, you didn't make a decision on it.
No, I'm talking about his communication to the county.
There was no decision made. So we're not saying that we, the recommendation was for the council to oppose it. Okay? That was the recommendation. The motion was made to table it indefinitely.
How does that move us forward with the situation to table it indefinitely?
We can vote.
So my rationale was, if I heard you correctly, you said the deck in the backyard is what is putting it within the 20 feet, correct?
It's going to be within, I think, three feet.
So if they got rid of the deck and brought something back to us, then it'd be a different, it'd be a different situation. So what I'm saying is, as it is currently, I don't want, I don't feel comfortable voting on something that goes against the county's code. So in an effort to not vote against something that goes against the county code, I'm saying let's squash it until they update what they're doing. Like, I don't feel comfortable saying, "Yeah, let's, let's vote on something that's against the county code." Because a variance, if I'm not, if I'm, when a variance comes to us, it's because they're basically asking us permission to, I don't want to say it's like a waiver, but like, they're asking us permission, correct?
It's a waiver of the code, so.
And how can we as a body waive the county code? You get what I'm saying? Waive the county code, like, that's not.
So we don't have to waive it. We can.
Vote no.
Just vote no. If we don't, if we're saying we want to stay with what the county is saying, which some of us are saying we want to stay with the county. We want him, we want it to be where they will say the council denied the waiver.
Yes.
Not tabled it, but denied the waiver. I think that's what everyone's trying to get to.
Well, nobody made a motion when the good man stood here, so I just made an action.
So your action was to table it. McCarthy motioned it, Scott seconded it.
If you want to deny it instead of it, then, then we could do that. But nobody made that.
No one made a motion.
Is it too late?
Going to vote first. Go ahead, Councilwoman Raina.
I guess I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance. To approve the recommendations of the NCC. Okay.
Yes.
And their recommendation is to deny.
And I heard you, Councilwoman Love says second. Any questions? Mrs. Ball? Thank you. Measure passes six to one. Okay, we're going to move on. We have no unfinished business. We're going to move on to the announcements. The announcements, 8.1, the 20743 Coalition Ceremonial Event is Saturday, May 17th, 2025, at 6100 Joss Street, Furma Heights, Maryland 20743 at 10:00 a.m. Mayor, Council, residents, staff, everyone is welcome to attend this ceremonial event. This is something that's really big for the Capitol Heights, C Pleasant and Furma Heights to, first time ever to have a collaborative coalition.
to, first time ever to have a collaborative coalition. So that's something to be proud of. We get it. 8.2, the regular work session, Monday, June the 2nd, 2025, C Pleasant City Hall in the Council Chamber, 6301 Addison Road, C Pleasant, Maryland, at 6:00 p.m. Hybrid and by Zoom video at 6:00. Again, meeting link details on the city's website. 8.3, C Pleasant's First Friday is coming back. Friday, June the 6th, 2025, at the Fun and Fit Park, 6200 C Pleasant Drive, C Pleasant, Maryland, 20743, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. All are welcome to attend. 8.4, public session, Monday, June the 9th, hybrid at the C Pleasant City Hall, 6301 Addison Road, C Pleasant, Maryland, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting link details are on the, found on the city's website. And 8.5 is the Maryland Municipal League Summer Conference, starting on June, Sunday, June the 22nd through Wednesday, June the 25th of 2025, and it will be held in Ocean City, Maryland. Are there any other updates, comments, concerns or questions? Not hearing any. The meeting is adjourned tonight at 8:48 p.m., 9:48 p.m. Thank you, have a great night. Thank you all for your attendance.